Please join the prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together to work as citizens of the city of Griffin. Keep us united as a team for the betterment of Griffin and keep us focused on our mission and goal of one Griffin in your name.
Amen.
All right, we need to amend the agenda. So we need to add item 14, Consider Rental Agreement Between City Griffin and the State Property Commission on behalf of the Georgia Department of Human Services, Division of Faith and Family and Children's Services, in the amount of $58,482 per year, 6,498 unusable square feet in the office space at 868 Copper Street, Griffin, Georgia. Do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Usable or unusable?
Oh, usable, square feet, usable, square feet, unusable for us. We have a motion from Ms. Murray. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. I'm Ms. Commissioner Flowers. All in favor of amending the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Moving into Presentations, Delegation, tonight. So Presentation of Delegation, recognize Mr. Clay Lewis as the April 2022 strongest link in the chain of award recipients. Chief Ryan Brock will address. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Hello, y'all. So firefighter Clay Lewis has been with our department for about 15 years. Veteran firefighter, and he does a great job around the station and on fire calls. But about a year or so ago, we decided we wanted to do a golf tournament. And we weren't, we wasn't sure what we wanted to raise the money for. We just knew we wanted to do a tournament. We wanted to raise money for something. So Clay jumped in on our committee. There's a five-person committee. And he started kicking around some ideas, and his wife works closely with DFACS. So he said, let's bring DFACS in and see if maybe they have a need. So we thought that was a great idea. So we brought in their leadership, and we talked with them. And through spitballing ideas, Clay once again come up with the idea of providing middle- and high-school-aged kids with a new pair of shoes a week or two before they go back to school. Actually having the experience of them being brought to Famous Footwear and pick out their own pair. Hopefully, if enough money was raised, that they, no price, you know, no price restrictions, they can pick out whatever they want. DFACS loved it. The committee loved it. We thought it was a wonderful idea. Well, then, that's part A. Part B comes in actually preparing for and executing the tournament. Clay, on his off time, spent countless dozens and dozens of hours of his own time going out and drumming up sponsorship for the tournament. We raised a great amount of money, and we're going to be able to provide those middle- and high-school-aged kids with these shoes now. Maybe even go to all foster kids because of the money that we raised. And a lot of that is due to Clay's actions that he took above and beyond being an employee on his own time and just having passion for the way he was doing it. So just, we thought it was a great thing that Clay did, and we appreciate what he did. He couldn't be here tonight, y'all. His wife had a mind surgery, and he's taking care of her. So we hate that he missed it.
Thank you, Chief. Next two items are a couple of Presentations and Proclaimations. The first one will be declaring May 11 through 17, 2022 National Police Week. And the second one will be declaring May 15 through 21, '22 to the National Public Works Week and Public Works Week in the city of Griffin. So Chief Gates, any of the other Griffin PD officers like to come forward?
That's okay.
We have a spare camera.
Welcome, sir. It's good to see you.
Chief, welcome tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. I had to be here.
Well, happy. I just want to commend you all. I noticed the monthly report that Part 1 crime is down right at 19% year-to-date compared to last year, so. Good job.
The summer's just around the corner.
Keep rolling.
We got, it's surprisingly, it's doing okay.
Yes, sir. Well, gentlemen, thank you for being here today. Today, we are going to issue a proclamation declaring for National Police Week 2022, May 11 through 17, 2022. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City Griffin Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in the killing in line of duty, including members of the City of Griffin Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in the previous year. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund 34th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2022. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11 through 17. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown and have staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin will observe May 11 through 17, 2022 as National Police Week in the City of Griffin and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. We hereby declare that a copy of this proclamation should be spread upon the minutes of the board, reflecting that I have a hereintent to cause a seal in City Griffin to be fixed on this, the 10th day of May of the year of our Lord, 2022. Senator Douglas S. Holbert, Mayor Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. We would like to present this to you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like to make any comments, feel free to do so.
Just so, just so the City Commission will know, we are actually sending Michael Todd Thomas' family to the National Memorial for the engraving of his name on the wall. So they'll be representing us along with some of our staff in Washington, DC here. Thank you for supporting that. So, come. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our public works folks, come on down. How are y'all doing today? Welcome to join us tonight. So tonight, we're going to issue a proclamation. It's National Public Works Week, Public Works Week in the City of Griffin. Whereas infrastructure, facilities, and services that are collectively known as public works are of vital importance to sustainability, sustainable communities, and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the City of Griffin, thereby contributing immeasurably the citizens' quality of life. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works, professionals, engineers, managers, employees, from state and local units of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, cemetery, golf course, public buildings, parks, fleet management, signs, and other structures and facilities essential to the service of our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Griffin, our state and our nation, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas in 2022, May 15 through 21 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Through NPWW and other efforts, the APWA seeks to raise the public awareness of public works issues and to increase the confidence and appreciation for public work employees who are dedicated to improving our quality of life for not only present but for future generations. Being now resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin does hereby declare that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners meeting and that the official seal be fixed designated the week of May 15 through 21, '22 to be National Public Works Week, Public Works Week in the City of Griffin. And we urge the Griffin citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, as well as local and state government agencies, to enact activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. And witness that on this 10th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022. Senator Douglas S. Holbert, Mayor and City Manager Jessica W. O'Connor. So we'd like to present, are you our official presenting? So there you go. And I think Ms. Susan's going to get us a quick picture. So what I want to do to do a little bit different is we'll all line up on this wall, and I want all of y'all to come in behind.
Oh, no, I'm not being.
Yes. So that we can be, we don't have to. Yes, you did. Well, we're going to start doing this. All pictures down.
Well, how about we ask people before, how about come out here?
You could, huh? But you're beautiful the way you are.
I'm at a tall list. That's all I need.
Ready?
Stand on your knees, Brian.
One, two, three. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a comment? Wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to thank the commissioners and the public for acknowledging what public works does for the city. They work very hard on daily, and they really do rise up to any challenges they face. So thank you.
All right, moving into the next exciting part of our program, Review Financial Reports for March 2022. Chief Financial Officer Marcus Schwab will address. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. So on, we have the financial statements. We have the cash report. And then we have the lost and lost collections, which show both the local option sales tax and performance and the special purpose local option sales tax. We're right on track with those, running about 80% of collections, of budget, rather. And on the interim statements by fund, if you look on page 13, you'll see that property tax collected is 103%. And franchise fees are on track to hit their numbers. Taxes overall are 90%. And the hotel motel tax information on page 34 is at 82% of budget.
Are there any questions from the board? Good job. Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Appreciate it. Moving into Citizens' Comment, at this time, the mayor opens up for two comments from the audience. Comments relating to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to the concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commissioner meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business in our night and form for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to manage domain city business, committing first speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come before the board? Is there anybody on my right side? Okay, moving into the consent agenda. Take these items five and six. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve.
Mr. Brock with motion. Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor of supporting the consent agenda, please raise your hand. We have a state zero. Moving to the regular agenda, Consider Executive Session Pursued to OCGA Section 5014.3B One B for the purpose of agreement of considering portions of the record may exempt from public inspection or disclosure under Article 4 of Chapter 18 of the Title 50, applicable exemption of CGA 501872A19 and 25A in pursuit to OCGA Section 5014.21 for the purpose of consulting and legal counsel pertaining to pending potential litigation. Litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, and other jurisdiction judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Mrs. Murray with a motion. Second by Ms. Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. And we will be back in just a few minutes, ladies and gentlemen.
Do we have a motion to come back into open session? Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Murray, all in favor. Okay. All right, item eight is consider the minutes of the City Riverport Commission's workshop and regular meeting on April 12, 2022. Commissioner Flowers has one minute absent. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Murray with the motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward with the second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signal by raising your hand. Six, five, zero, one, Witness, Ms. Flowers abstaining.
Correct.
What is this?
Minutes.
Oh. Item nine, consider the purchase of two, 2025, Altech AA 55P bucket truck source fuel contract in amount of $299,000, $400 each, and amend the budget accordingly.
Motion approved.
Second word of motion, Mr. McCord with the second.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, the ones that we're getting rid of, is there any value still attached? Like, can we sell it or anything?
Well, we're not getting rid of this.
Oh, I thought we're placing?
They are going to be a replacement, but if you'll notice, um, it's funny that you ask that because we did have that we were going to surplus two units, but we actually, this is probably going to be at least a year out. And so we can't surplus them yet because we still need them.
Okay.
We've got to use them. So we'll be back asking to surplus those once we know that we're getting these in, but they're how many weeks out?
A thousand.
Yeah. A thousand and two out, two years out.
Okay, so then in the interim, they are, cannot be rebuilt. What does that mean in terms of a two-year window?
We hope that the great fleet maintenance superintendent that was here a little while ago can help us with them until then.
Okay.
Which is why we're asking you to approve them now. If we wait until time to buy, then we've got years and years.
Yeah, this is like, there are our place in line, so it will go ahead and put us in line for that deal. Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second one, Mr. McCord, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item ten is consider the purchase of ten additional LPR cameras, nine takes, and one mobile, along with the associated installation and support from block safety, single source, and initial amount of $31,500, annual recurring cost of $20,000 for a period of three years, equating to a total of $87,500. Do we have a motion? Who was that? Ms. Murray? Ms. Murray with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ward with the second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item eleven is consider a claim against the City Rippen by DeCarlos Johnson and Kanaya Watson, based upon anti-lieutenant notice dated April 7, 2022, Marine Legal for LLC resulting from an incident on October 10, 2021, in which Johnson and Watson were arrested by Officer Caleb Daniel Griffin, Police Department. Do we have a motion to deny?
I recuse them for conflict of interest.
Ms. Flowers. We have a motion to deny from Ms. Murray. Do we have a second? Denied. All work will make a second to deny. All in favor of the no, please signal by raising your hand. All against, like, sign. So with the three, two, and one extension, the two of them are Mrs. Ward, Mrs. McCord, and one extension, Miss Commissioner Flowers. Item twelve, consider a memorandum of understanding between the Sports Department and Community Affairs Office of Downtown Development and the City Rippen, the City Bank Streets Program.
I think Commissioner for who?
Commissioner Murray with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the memorandum of understanding, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item thirteen is consider declaring as surplus 130 upright upholstered chairs to use in the courtroom. Do we have a motion to declare surplus? So Mr. Commissioner McCord, motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item fourteen is consider a rental agreement between the City Rippen and the State Properties Commission on behalf of the Georgia Department of United Services Division of Family and Children Services, amount of $58,482 per year for $6,498 usable square feet of office space at 868 Popper Street, Rippen, Georgia. The old police station. Do we have a motion to approve the rental agreement?
Call, call it rippen.
Yes.
Okay, read what it's going to be looking.
It's going to be the old Rippen.
I understand, but read the whole, the whole thing.
Eight sixty-eight Popper Street, Rippen, Georgia.
West Hall. Okay, to.
West Hall.
Department of Family and Children's.
Yes, ma'am.
And this, just let me give you all a little bit about this, and I'm sorry, it is a little rushed because if there are members right now, DFAC's house in the old, old county courthouse, I mean, it's called, um, they actually have to be out May 15th, their lease expired quite some time ago, the county has allowed them to extend it. But right now, we are working through a lease that would be permanent usage of our building. This is just storage because right now they are still mostly at home. Um, they're trying to figure out what their operations will be coming back from COVID. Um, most of their staff is working out of their homes, but they do need a place to put all of their equipment and stuff. So that's what this one half of the police station will be used for when it comes to access and actually opening it as an office. There's a lot more work that needs to be done. And there will be a much bigger charge because we're not just storing stuff. We're now, we're going to have to do work ahead of time for IT access, for networking things, even the parking lot may need some redesigning, um, once they move their staff and then their visitors in there. So this is just for the storage, which is why it's a short, um, initial term through the end of the year, and then in the interim, we'll work on a long-term lease for them to actually open in our old police station.
So if they, if they decide to go into a long-term lease, how does that affect the renewal option this year?
We would not renew it, and we would just enter into a new lease.
Okay, okay.
It is a little bit more difficult to work with the State Properties Commission because they're so set by the standard leases that they use. So Kelsey and Drew and I have gone back and forth with the leasing specialists for a while, trying to get this where we were comfortable with it, but also so that they can go ahead and get some stuff moved in. So that's why it's sort of a last-minute thing today.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Murray with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ward with the second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Any comments from City Managers Report?
I hope you noticed in item thirteen that you have declared as surplus these blue chairs that have been sitting out here for forever and ever. Um, we received a donation in honor of Mr. Andrew from his family at Christmas time, and they talked to me for quite some time about what they could do, um, for it to be something that would benefit the commission room or the commissioners themselves, but also the citizens. And so, um, with all of COVID going on and the things that have occurred in this room the last couple of years, we felt like upgrading it would be a good, um, way to sort of recognize everybody as well that's been in the commission room. I think they look very nice. So a big thank you to Ms. Bartholomew and Ms. Brock for going through all of that. And then also our facilities, um, crew because we didn't know they were coming unassembled, so they had to. But they do look nice, and I think the room looks a lot bigger. So just wanted to make sure we made mention of that.
You said something about the commissioners again?
So the commissioners' chairs are budgeted for next fiscal year, so you all will be getting new chairs as well because they are a little out of budget. Um, so you'll get those as well, but we did budget for those. They're a little bit more expensive than all of these are, so they're in our budget for FY '23. And also just want to say congratulations to those that were recognized tonight. I did get to go present Firefighter Lewis with the Strongest Link Chain on Friday, Thursday, um, and he was very excited. I hated he couldn't be here, but I think it was a little deserved honor. As well as, I like recognizing our employees. It's not often that we get to say thank you to Public Works for really a thankless job, so I'm glad that we have asked the directors to let us know when those special weeks are so we can bring them in here, and then of course, the police as well. I don't, don't take offense that y'all don't get clapped for tonight. I think y'all just were here like a week ago, so that's why, that's me. Um, POs, to answer a little bit more, uh, clearly, Commissioner Flowers' question, you're going to see that more often. We're realizing that supply chain is two and three years out, so we're going ahead and bringing you POs, um, with what the quote is today. But to, in order for us to even place an order, we have to have a PO knowing that it may be two or three years, and we may be coming back in two years saying we have to amend the budget again because it's 350,000, not 299. We're not going to ask for more than what they're quoting now. So it's a little weird. We're trying to work through it as we, we get these issues, but our waterway sweater truck may be the next thing that you get, and it's 2025 model because we just can't get them until then. And so we've got a unit that we are okay with for a couple of years, but in order to get the one, the one we need it in our regular life cycle, that's sort of how, how we're having to deal with it. Um, one thing, in case you have our healthcare benefits, open enrollment is May 20th, um, so any changes that you want to make with health benefits or retirement, any of those accounts, you would need to do that during that time. And then last, but certainly not least, I just got noticed right before the meeting that I have made an offer to an economic development director that he has accepted. So we will have a new economic development director. His name is Jeremy Stratton. He is coming to us from Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. Um, he also has had his own business for the last couple of years. It's a logistics company, but he says, this is the thrill of creating and moving for an actual community. So he's ready to get back into that. Um, I'm excited to have him. It's been so fresh. I have no idea when he's starting and how that will work at this point, but we will hopefully have him in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whelan.
Nothing further.
Mr. Brock.
No comment, sir.
Mrs. Murray.
Good to see everyone. I just wanted to let everybody know that I had the honor of attending the kickoff of our Citizens Police Academy last week. Great job, chief. We have a great group so far, combined employees who work for the city as well as citizens, and looking forward to the rest of that, um, well, our further sessions. So learning a lot. Thanks for doing that for us.
Mine was the boring one. The rest of them will be fun.
We enjoyed it. I've had people that were invited have called and said, man, it's only going to get better, right? Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Flowers.
No comment.
Commissioner Ward.
No comment.
Commissioner. Come on. Just a couple of quick things. Equity inclusiveness, um, that was yesterday, and Commissioner Brock, myself, and Commissioner Ward, along with many members of the edit team were there. And so to be coming as a city of, um, equity, inclusiveness, and diversity, the GMAT in the future, um, what the requirements will be for more commissioners and elected officials to be appointed. So if you see those workshops that are offered throughout the state, they're offered all over to jump on that. Wanted to thank the chief for a great open house for your new facility. Y'all did a wonderful job and had that space with the fire department. You, I think that's going to be a great place to, to bring the community together in the future years. Fire Rescue, great job going down to Zebulon last night, helped save the point joint and the whole downtown, so good job on those efforts. And this coming, uh, second Saturday is mating Rippen theme. A lot of great things will be happening in Rippen, cornball tournaments and different activities. So that's this Saturday, second Saturday. Um, and then June Jam is the 11th of June. Sir Teak Horton will be the featured performer, and then Summer Concert Series kicks off, um, the next 10 weeks after that at 7:30 on Saturday nights. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Murray with the motion, do we have a second? Mr. McCord with the second. All in favor, say bye.